Good evening. We are, we're going to recess, call the meeting to order. We're going to recess for a quick five minutes. Let everybody get settled. Calling the meeting back to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to elected officials. We emphasize that elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have any ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called so that you can make your comments just like an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. And when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes for a presentation. Each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners, I have an engagement I have to leave for 8:30, so we're going to limit everyone to five minutes tonight for Q and A. And we don't have a vice chair today, so rather than appoint someone, we'll try to get out of here. And so Commissioners have five minutes and will be called upon to speak a second time after all other Commissioners have chosen to speak for a first time. Please have your thoughts and questions organized. As a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the Chair. Commission members, please remember to share, that you share this time with your fellow Commissioners. Please keep your comments and questions pithy and don't repeat topics that have already been discussed or questioned. The time to make all public statements is before a motion is made. Once a motion is on the floor, further discussion regarding the motion must come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Commissioners, if you are not ready to move a case forward, please indicate as such when questioned. Finally, I ask that everyone here and on the Zoom, the Commission members, the staff, the public, to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the Chair will ask the offending person or persons to leave the room or to be muted on Zoom until such time they regain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. After each case you are, after each case you are here for ends, please be courteous. I'm sorry, now I'm speaking to the audience here. After the case you are here for ends, please be courteous and leave this room quietly until you have exited. And have your post-case discussions out there in the hallway. Please close the doors as we continue to address the remaining business on the agenda item. Thank you, and may we have the roll call, please.
Chair Cameron.
Here.
Commissioner Cutright.
Here.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory.
Here.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Kopac.
Here.
Commissioner McIver.
Here.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Woke?
Here.
A quorum has been established.
Thank you. There are no adjustments to the agenda. We'll move on to the approval, excuse me, approval of the minutes and the consistency statement. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kopac and seconded by Commissioner Cutright to approve the minutes and the consistency statements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to public hearings, initial zoning map changes. We have one case on that item tonight, and that is case Z24-005-BDG24-003, Planko Residence. Planko, sorry, Planko, Planko. Mix it up by vowels.
All right. Good evening, Chairwoman Cameron and Commission. I am Peyton Burgess, a planner with the department, and I will be presenting Z24-5A and BDG24-3. So this is a request for an annexation and a translational zoning at 4873 Stanley Road. So the existing zoning is residential suburban 20. There is no proposed change to that zoning district. And then it is also in an established residential place type with a zoning overlay of falls of Newt Jordan Lake, District B watershed protection overlay, and they are proposing a single-family dwelling unit. So as you can see on the zoning context map, that is that RS20 zoning, there is no change being proposed to that. It's also surrounded by that district. And then you've got the aerial map. To give you a little context, this site does back up to the Swans Mill neighborhood, and it's just slightly north of Sandy Ridge Elementary School. The place type map shows that it is established residential, as with the surrounding properties. A neighborhood meeting was not required for this request, and there were no Durham rezoning explorer comments that staff received in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the place type designation of established residential, and the proposal is consistent with all five applicable comprehensive plan policies, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Also, one more thing to add. I forgot to ask Peyton to add this. Staff can certify that all notification requirements have been conducted for all cases tonight in accordance with state and local laws, and affidavits are on file in the Planning Department. We have nobody signed up to speak on this case tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from, well, let me see, nobody signed up, but is there applicant here to speak anyway? Nope. No committee members want to speak. No one on Zoom. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we are now open for Commissioner discussions and question, discussion and questions. Any questions? Already ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case Z24-0005A, annexation BDG24-00003, Planko Residence, I make a motion that we move this case forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Gary to move case Z24-005-BDG24-003, Planko Residence, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory.
Yes.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopac.
Yes.
Commissioner McIver.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
And I missed Commissioner Chakowski.
Also, yes.
Thank you, sorry about that. The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our first zoning map changes case for the evening. That is case Z23-0051-BDG23-0033, Mariah Ridge. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you. Andy Lester of the Planning Department. There is a request for an annexation of 15 parcels of land totaling 168.307 acres located between Urin Road and Mount Mariah Road and crossing the Orange County and Durham County line. The properties located in Orange County are outside the urban growth boundary. Historically, there had been a consent judgment that had prohibited the town of Chapel Hill and the city of Durham from annexing this area within either jurisdiction. The town of Chapel Hill and the city of Durham recently amended the consent judgment to allow for these Orange County parcels to petition the city of Durham for annexation. The current zoning of the parcels in Orange County is rural transition, and in Durham County is residential suburban 20. The applicant proposes to change the designation of 13 parcels totaling 155.98 acres to planned development residential, 7.348, to allow up to 1,000 apartments, townhouses, and single-family dwelling units with up to 2,500 building square footage of office use without drive-through facilities. The applicant is seeking an initial zoning of RS20 for the remaining two parcels totaling 12.327 acres. Any use within the RS20 zoning district will be allowed by right on those two properties. The zoning context map shows the existing RT and RS20 zoning districts changed to the PDR 7.348 district. If you look to the right of Mount Mariah Road beneath the proposed PDR 7.348 zoning district, you can see the proposed RS20 initial zoning into the city of Durham. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. Mount Mariah bisects the site. The western portion of the site is bounded by Urin Road. The site is surrounded by a mix of undeveloped land, large lot, single-family, and multifamily. Further south is the New Hope Common Shopping Center. The properties in Durham County are currently designated mixed residential neighborhood and recreation and open space on the place type map. The properties in Orange County are not designated a place type. However, the town of Chapel Hill's future land use map designates them as rural residential. The proposed planned development residential 7.348 zoning for the parcels within Durham County is consistent with the designated place type. For the parcels located in Orange County, consistency with the Durham place type map cannot be evaluated as the comprehensive plan does not include these Orange County parcels. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommend designating two of the Orange County parcels east of Mount Mariah Road to the mixed residential neighborhood place type. There would be no change to the place type map for the parcels currently within Durham County. In addition, staff recommends mixed residential neighborhood for the one Orange County parcel east of Mount Mariah Road identified by Penn 9890949949, proposed for RS20 as it corresponds with the adjacent Durham County parcel. For additional background, in 1949, Chapel Hill extraterritorial jurisdiction was authorized by the state. In 1986, a consent order was given to settle an annexation dispute between the town of Chapel Hill and the city of Durham. The original order established an annexation boundary where neither jurisdiction would accept or process any petition or annexation of land, initiate or process any unilateral annexation of any land, and take any other steps to annex land. In 1994, there is an amendment to the annexation boundary. On April 26, 2023, the town of Chapel Hill approved a resolution to direct the town manager and/or town attorney to collaborate with the city of Durham to amend the existing consent judgment. On October 19, 2023, the city of Durham approved a resolution to authorize an amendment to the consent order. On November 14, 2023, the consent judgment was amended again. The result of the second consent judgment is the new annexation boundary lines. The original annexation boundary line was the county line. With the amendment, everything east of the new line is property that can be annexed into Durham. All the parcels requesting annexation are east of the new line and are able to request annexation into the city of Durham. And with the proposed annexation and rezoning, the applicant has included graphic and text commitments in their development plan. Some notable commitments include 50 affordable dwelling units, a $20,000 proffer to Durham Public Schools, various design commitments, undisturbed wildlife corridor, height limitations, a maximum impervious surface of 55%, rebuilding standards for single-family homes, a series of planned connected open spaces to include publicly accessible walking and biking trails, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon and crosswalk installed at the Site Access 1 and Sunlight Drive, an electric charging station, and native species to be planted. This is the full extent of the proposed project. It extends from the New Hope Creek to the east to Urin Road to the west, with Mount Mariah bisecting the site. The site does contain natural heritage area. The natural heritage area located on the east will remain undisturbed. The natural heritage area located on the southern portion of the site is provided additional protections with a commitment to locate tree preservation at that location. The development plan does indicate that streams located on the west side of Mount Mariah Road will be impacted by the proposal. As you can see, the applicant has extended the proposed building and parking envelope over the western streams. To develop that area with buildings and parking area, the applicant will need to submit a stream determination at the time of site plan. If the stream determination concludes that there are no not existing streams in that area, then the applicant will be able to develop there. These streams reflect the location of streams found in the soils map in the U.S. Topographical Survey. The Durham Unified Development Ordinance requires streams and water sources to be shown based on these sources of information. The portion east of Mount Mariah Road is bound by text amendment number nine that states that all land east of Mount Mariah Road, including the New Hope Corridor Wildlife Protection Area, shall remain undisturbed other than what is required to construct any required roadway improvements or future trail at the western fringe of the New Hope Creek flood plain. No access point is proposed for this portion of the site as the intent is to have it remain undisturbed. Any potential disturbance is located outside the flood plain. West of Mount Mariah Road is where the proposed 1,000 units and limited commercial would be located. Three access points along Mount Mariah Road and one access point along Urin Road are illustrated on the plan. Three development pods are indicated. These pods dictate where uses can be located. Pod one is generally located between Pod two and Pod three and would allow apartments, townhouses, and non-residential uses. To the north, Pod two would allow apartments, townhouses, and single-family. To the south, Pod three would allow apartments, townhouses, single-family, and non-residential uses. As stated earlier, the town of Chapel Hill approved a resolution to work with the city of Durham to amend the consent judgment. It is important to note that the city of Durham is not bound by the contents of the town of Chapel Hill resolution. The city of Durham is only bound by the city's resolution and the amended consent judgment. In the Chapel Hill resolution, there are five elements of the proposal that were requested to be included in the project. The proposal is consistent with four of the five elements. The proposal will provide 50 affordable units, as defined by the Durham Unified Development Ordinance, provide a mix of housing types, commits to establishing a series of planned connected open space areas utilizing walking and biking trails with public access, and will bring utilities to the town of Chapel Hill tract in an effort to construct affordable housing on the town of Chapel Hill site. There is one element of the resolution that is found to be inconsistent. The proposal donates only a portion of parcel 9890740792, which is the panhandle parcel touching Urin Road, and not the entire parcel. The remaining parcel, portion of the parcel is used as street access to Urin Road. While staff acknowledges that Exhibit C in the resolution illustrates a road going through the parcel and connecting to Urin Road, the specific text indicates that the entire parcel should be donated to the town of Chapel Hill. Three neighborhood meetings were held on November 16, 2023, December 13, 2023, and November 20, 2024. As of December 10, 2024, there are 12 comments for this proposal on Durham, on the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is generally consistent with the place type map designations of mixed residential neighborhood and recreation and open space located within Durham County. But the remainder of the proposal lies outside the area covered by the Durham Comprehensive Plan. If the City Council approves the proposal, staff recommends designating two of the Orange County parcels east of Mount Mariah Road to the recreation open space place type and the parcels west of Mount Mariah Road to the mixed residential neighborhood place type. There would be no change to the place type map for the parcels currently within Durham County. Staff also recommends mixed residential neighborhood for one Orange County parcel east of Mount Mariah Road, proposed for RS20 as it corresponds with the adjacent Durham parcel. If the proposal is approved, the comprehensive plan would be automatically amended to extend the urban growth boundary to incorporate the Orange County parcels and establish the suburban tier for this area. Thank you for your time, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant to the podium, please?
Good evening, Chairwoman Cameron, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Patrick Byker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm here tonight representing MI Homes for this agenda item. I'm joined tonight by Erica Latham, the Vice President of MI, our traffic engineer, Earl Llewellyn with Kim Lee Horn, our chief land planner, Bob Zumwalt with BGE, as well as our affordable housing development partner, Ted Heilbronn of Kelly Development. Ted will speak briefly after I do in regards to affordable housing at this location. Members of the Planning Commission, the strong majority, 75 to 80% of the 168 acres we are discussing tonight, are located in Orange County. While that may seem odd, it was about 10 years ago that I worked on an annexation and a rezoning of over 60 acres in Wake County at the intersection of Glenwood Avenue and Alexander Drive. The city of Durham annexed that area, and now it is developed with apartments and a Harris Teeter anchored shopping center. Most people associate Briar Creek with Raleigh, but this section of Briar Creek is in the city of Durham. Similarly, a significant portion of the Metamont development in the town of Chapel Hill is within Durham County. As Mr. Lester described during his presentation, there was a lawsuit back in the late 80s and early 90s, and there was a consent judgment that was entered about 30 years ago that Chapel Hill could not annex into Durham County and the city of Durham could not annex into Orange County. In regard to the assemblage that we are discussing tonight, it's very important to note that the city of Durham has water and sewer located in the Mount Mariah Road directly adjacent to the assemblage. This water and sewer was installed in connection with the flats at 5512 Apartments that are built about 20 years ago. When our team first looked at this acreage in Orange County, it was in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town of Chapel Hill. However, and this is a big however, due to the construction of Interstate 40, it is impossible to provide water and sewer from Orange Water and Sewer Authority to this area. The reason for that is there were no conduits for water and sewer lines installed under Interstate 40 when it was built back in the 1980s. Since this section of Orange County can only be served by the city of Durham, the Chapel Hill Town Council and the Durham City Council both unanimously approved the amendment to the aforementioned 30-year-old consent judgment to allow Durham to annex and provide utilities to this acreage. Long story short, that's the background information that relates to Attachment H and Attachment J in your staff report, and I appreciate Mr. Lester going over that as well. The size of this acreage allows MI to move forward with three types of homes, housing types within this development, apartments, townhouses, and single-family detached homes. This is a fine location for new housing since it is proximate to water and sewer infrastructure and commercial services at New Hope Commons. Accordingly, if one looks, if one looks beyond the arbitrary location of the Orange Durham County line, county line, it is an assemblage that warrants inclusion in the urban growth boundary. Again, it was the consent judgment that precluded consideration of this site being in the urban growth boundary back when we were going through the process of adopting our comprehensive plan and developing the place type map. This assemblage, this assemblage that we're discussing tonight allows us to fulfill the aspiration we often can discuss during the comprehensive plan adoption process, the vision to create a 15-minute city that was often referred to during those public hearings. To that end, I walked from the, oh, sorry, I walked from the southern end of our assemblage at Sunlight Drive down Mount Mariah Road to the front door of the Walmart in New Hope Commons, and that walk took 13 minutes, took less than 13 minutes. To facilitate bicycle connectivity, I trust the Planning Commission noted the bike and pedestrian infrastructure that's committed to with this development plan, and that also will facilitate connectivity with New Hope Commons. In addition, there will be strong pedestrian connectivity within this assemblage as well, which is one of the unique attributes, fairly unique attributes of this development plan. Moreover, the development plan also has strong environmental safeguards, most notably the preservation of all the acreage on the east side of Mount Mariah Road, which is approximately 25 acres, to augment the preserved area around the New Hope Creek corridor. Likewise, the development envelope on the west side of Mount Mariah Road is outside of any natural heritage area, as is described in detail on page four of your staff report. In fact, the comprehensive plan consistency score of 27 out of 33 applicable policies demonstrates how carefully this development plan has been crafted to meet the goals of our new comprehensive plan. Of course, with any residential project, there are always two overriding considerations, which are the educational needs of schoolchildren, and then the affordability of housing for hard-working families who are below our area's median income. In regard to school education, it is vital to note that the vast majority of the households in this assemblage are in the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools District. This section of Orange County is districted to Ephesus Road Elementary, Phillips Middle, and East Chapel Hill High, all of which are within three miles of this assemblage. And what was surprising to our development team is that the student population in the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools District has decreased by 1,000 students over the past four years. Our research could not find any charter schools in southern Orange County that would have taken these students. And the St. Thomas More Catholic School, which is kindergarten through eighth grade, only has 359 students. Accordingly, it seems to me that the lack of new housing inventory and constricted supply has priced out families with school-aged children from the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools District. It is also important for the Planning Commission to be aware that the dedicated property tax that is paid for Chapel Hill City Schools applies to this section of Orange County. For the Orange County portion of this assemblage, For the Orange County portion of this assemblage, that tax amounts to 19.8 cents per 100 of assessed value. For the average $393,000 home referred to in the staff report, this property tax for the Chapel Hill schools amounts to approximately $775 per year. To summarize then, there's a confluence of factors that we hope will guide this commission to recommend approval of this development plan: strong compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, implementation of our goal of creating a 15-minute city, construction of bike and pedestrian infrastructure, solid environmental stewardship, and building new housing in a school district that needs an influx of children. I also want to highlight the discrepancy that Mr. Lester referred to. Our perspective is that this development plan adheres to all five requirements of the Chapel Hill Town Council's resolution. To be frank, we don't understand how there was a confusion on this issue. If you look at the bottom of this slide that's before you, which is the Chapel Hill Town Council Resolution approved on April 26 of last year, you can see the applicant will donate a portion of the property, which is identified as PIN, I'll read it for the record, That parcel is 200 feet wide. The road right-of-way to connect this assemblage to Irwin Road will be approximately 60 feet wide, leaving about 140 feet that will then be dedicated to the Town of Chapel Hill to be recombined with property that the Town of Chapel Hill owns directly adjacent to the south. And so, for all those reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval, and now I will turn it over to Ted Heilbronn, the Principal of Kelly Development, to discuss affordable housing. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cameron and the rest of Planning Commission. My name is Ted Heilbronn. I'm the Principal of Kelly Development Company. We're an affordable developer active here in Durham. This will be a surprise to none of you. We are tickled about the opportunity to build Lytec on this site. We, with the exception of a small handful of projects like this where we get pulled in by a market rate developer, it's rare to find access to real estate where we can build Lytec in parts of the city where affordable housing is not typically built. And the access to the amenities and the retail and the Walmart at New Hope Commons is unique, walking-distance access to amenities elevates this site by NCHFA scoring criteria above a number of others that we work on in the city. None of that is news to any of you at all. I think everyone on Planning Commission recognizes that there is an important need to get affordable housing into corners of Durham like this. What I want to speak to tonight has actually more to do with the market rate units in the project, which we have nothing to do with, our group does. Most of the work that we've done in Durham over the last few years has been up in the Bragtown community, and we're going through the effort now of reaching out to neighbors to prepare folks to be on a list server where we can communicate and get folks' income qualified to get into our Bragtown affordable developments. There are a significant number of folks that we started working with four or five years ago that no longer live in Bragtown. They leave. They couldn't afford to continue living in lower-income areas across the city where housing costs are lower. The reality is Durham is short thousands and thousands and thousands of units, and you don't see that play out, you know, in Hope Valley, another higher-end community in the city. You see that play out in Waltown, in Bragtown, in Merrick Moore, in Haytie, and all the communities that the city invests so much time and effort and money, for good reason, trying to protect. So, the thousand units of housing that are out here, and the market rate units of housing that are in this development, which I think Patrick mentioned, we see it as rare to have a project that's going to have townhomes, single-family, and Lytec, and affordable apartments.
Thank you. Y'all have used all 10 minutes.
Thanks very much.
All right. Next, we will have members of the community. Let me see, I have a sign-up sheet. Lose my space. We have Wanda Roden. Just a reminder, everyone has two minutes. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Two minutes, ma'am?
Two. The timer is right here.
My name is Wanda Roden. I live at 5311 Mount Moriah Road, which is in the heart of this project. My, my, my home and the home next door to me is surrounded on three sides by this project. I have lived in my home for 50 years and have no plans to leave it until my death or incapacitation. With this project, I have no positive options, only negative. The increase in traffic has already forced, that's already occurred, has forced me to have to turn around in my yard to even get out onto Mount Moriah. Add 100 units to that, then I will not be able to get on to, even get on the street to drive. The foot traffic that will be, that will be increased will only allow for, will allow for the people within the project, as well as any nefarious people that might be walking up and down Mount Moriah, to just be looking for targets, including my home, where I live alone. My safety is in question with that. The proposed 30-foot, 10-yard boundary between my property and the construction, which they, they have graciously offered to add foliage and trees that I can choose, or at one time they even offered to put a solid fence there for me around my property to discourage the traffic. I appreciate that. There's many other areas that I would suggest that the zoning, if there's going to have to be this project, if there is need for the affordable housing, if there is need for all of these extra houses, there's 100 units property, I would, I would like to suggest a rezoning that is of less density and use the property with multifamily units to be in line more with an R2-type zoning, single-family at R20.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, we have Skylar Gulliver.
My name is Skylar Gulliver, and I live at 730 Rutherford Street, Durham, North Carolina, 27705. First, I'd like to thank the Durham Planning Commission for holding this hearing to allow the public comment on the rezoning of these acres along Mount Moriah Road. As you may be aware, the Triangle Connectivity Collaborative and the National Heritage Inventory have documented a rare species of tree in this area known as the Big Shell Bark Hickory, also found in this area is the White Nymph Tree. Both species are classified as critically imperiled within the state. TCC has identified the tree, the trees up and down the New Hope Creek where they have been permitted to survey, and believe that the streams themselves play an important role in how this species is able to thrive in the area. TCC has not been permitted to survey the Orange County side of these parcels, where streams head toward New Hope Creek and Dry Creek. The applicant is only committing to a minimum amount of tree preservation in the area where the resources are abundant and likely contain the unique environment in which these rare species are present. The bulk of the tree preservation is across the street on the east side of Mount Moriah. These properties have been committed as undisturbed, rightly so considering the sensitivity. Tree preservation serves many purposes, including heat island mitigation, which is in part caused by hot impervious surfaces such as roads. More roads lead to more hotter runoff that would be detrimental to New Hope Creek. Durham County and city residents such as myself value the tree cover and flood mitigation that accompanies the rural transition designation. I would like to advocate for a tree survey to be conducted on the Orange County side of the, at this review stage, so the boards have an opportunity to assess neighborhood development as appropriate before approving our request. Additionally, a request has been made to the applicant to increase the total tree preservation percent above minimum UDO requirements.
Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Herron.
May it please, members of the Commission. My name is Joseph Herron. I live at 5205 Mount Moriah Road, which is the parcel immediately to the north of this proposed project. While I am opposed to this project, I am not vehemently opposed to, however, I do believe that on its face, that this has the appearance of spot zoning. Basically, when you look at the adjacent properties and the properties on the middle, to me, this appears to be a textbook case of spot zoning. As to me personally, there has been, I believe, a lack of communication with the developer and those adjoining property owners such as myself, other than the minimum meetings that were required. I understand the highest and best use of this property is necessary, and the property immediately adjacent to mine has become at times an attractive nuisance for the unsheltered who happen to panhandle at the intersections of 15501 and Mount Moriah. With that said, I do believe that some development of this property is warranted, however, the degree of density to which this is proposed, I think, is unreasonable, given the fact that Mount Moriah is a two-lane state road. I was previously Construction Counsel for NC DOT, and I have reviewed the traffic impact analysis, and I've also looked at the TIP proposals, and I have not seen any sort of plans in the TIP for expanding this roadway, other than what the developers have proposed for turnways. With that said, my concerns are basically threefold with respect to my property. Number one, some sort of privacy fencing along my boundary. Secondly, some sort of pad into my driveway as I get turns now, and with construction traffic, that'll even be increased, and some sort of signage with respect to my property, that my property is not part of this subdivision, nor is it part of the development for construction purposes. With that said, I would ask the Commission to deny this request, and if not deny this request, at least consider a lesser amount of residential use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Goodfred.
Hello. My name's Mike Goodfred. I have property on Mount Moriah Road there. I think this is a wonderful development here. They need the housing, and it's a low-traffic area. And MI Homes is a great home builder. They care about the environment. They put in Greenway Pass everywhere. The houses have plug-in chargers for their cars. They wire them, pre-wire them for the solar panels for the roof, and they care about the community, and they will just make the City of Durham a better place by having this development in there. And then also, you have the affordable housing in there, which we need so desperately also. This is a win-win for everybody. The City of Durham would be proud to have this included in their city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Malcolm Isley. I live at 201 Old Mill Place here in Durham, but probably more to the point, I represent Jane Isley, my mom, who owns 2881 Mount Moriah, which is the two parcels you heard about that are part of the annexation, but they're not part of the development project. But even though we're not part of the development project, doesn't mean that we don't support the project. We believe it's the right project for this land. Just having moved back to Durham, I was born here, but I've been away for 17 years. Finding the right housing for the right people is hard. This provides a solution to that. It's a desirable area. The plan that they have here in place is solid, and we'll be able to meet price points for many different individuals and families in this area. So while, again, we're not part of the development project, we are right next door to it, and we do support this project, and I would ask that you approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After that, we have Annette Rice and Steve Kohn, so you can be ready.
Good evening. My name is Christina Lingley. I'm at 104 Bay Meadows Lane, Durham, 27705, just right down the road. This is Morningstar's second proposal that seeks to abandon the guiding principles of our city and the Comprehensive Plan in order to expand city boundaries into surrounding rural communities. Despite their efforts, they have yet to meet all three criteria outlined in Policy 168 of our Durham Comprehensive Plan, which must be fully satisfied to expand the UGB. Their prior request was unanimously rejected, and the proposal continues to undermine the established goals and objectives of both the city and its Comprehensive Plan. Context matters. It matters not only to the specifics of this plan, but also to the broader principles of city growth, housing needs, and the preservation of our remaining rural environments. Balancing these needs, preservation, and planning for growth is the very reason why the UGB and rural preservation objectives exist. These boundaries were designated to protect key rural areas while guiding sustainable urban development. The context of growth must be weighed against the potential for destruction. Urban sprawl in this area would have devastating consequences, directly contradicting decades of planning efforts by the Orange County and Durham County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the New Hope Creek Corridor open space. It threatens the very values the city reaffirmed through the updated Comprehensive Plan and the UDO rewrite initiative. I urge you to not approve an annexation request beyond the UGB and city limits, and uphold the principles of sustainable growth and rural preservation, commitments Durham has made alongside its community members, like myself, who was born and raised here. Let us honor the vision that prioritizes thoughtful planning and conservation for the benefit of current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Annette Rice, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to talk about Moriah Ridge and water, because the water concerns are the very thirsty elephant in this room right now. As you've heard, Owassa has never been able to provide water or sewer to this area because of I-40. So basically, the developer's application for the annexation into the city is mandatory so they can water the elephant. Currently-approved annexations within the UGB already exceed Durham's existing water supply and infrastructure. To annex land outside of the UGB, and not just outside of the UGB, but in another county, contradicts Policy 118 of the new Comprehensive Plan whereby we say we don't want to extend water and sewer services and infrastructure outside of that UGB. This development is really most sincerely outside of our UGB. In 2022, the City of Durham fell short by over 1.1 million gallons of water a day. Think of what Durham has approved and built since 2022. In 2022, the county was short 7.5% of our water needs. The Town of Cary helped bridge that gap, and the Town of Cary in Alamance County helped Owassa fill their 10% gap in water. It's no wonder that Owassa can't and won't be able to supply services to the property because they don't have it either. The Moriah Ridge project involves Durham absorbing the water needs of 1,000 dwellings located primarily in Orange County, and along with that comes a commitment to provide roughly 250,000 gallons of water a day. Presently, Durham is a lead partner in the Western Intake Project for Jordan Lake Water Supply, hoping to increase that supply, but other partners in the project have already backed out.
Thank you. Steve Kohn.
My name is Steve Kohn. I live at 1406 Pennsylvania Avenue in Durham. I'm the Chair of the Open Space Committee of the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission, and I'm representing that commission here. As the citizen group that advises Durham's governments on all matters connected to open space, our focus is on the land east of Mount Moriah Road, which the development plan proposes to leave undisturbed, but with no offer of permanent protection for this land. This area is in the New Hope Creek Corridor, one of the most significant open space corridors in all of Durham County, and is recognized by the state's Natural Heritage Program as being of statewide ecological significance. Therefore, this area has been slated for permanent conservation in numerous plans, including the City of Durham's Watershed Protection Plan and the New Hope Creek Corridor Open Space Plan. Permanent conservation of areas of this sort is prescribed by the Durham Comprehensive Plan, which calls for permanent protection of open space and describes the land most suitable for permanent protection as natural heritage areas, forested tracts, and bottom lands. The area east of Mount Moriah Road is all three of those. Merely stating in a development plan that land will remain undisturbed certainly does not constitute permanent conservation. There are two standard ways of providing permanent conservation for an open space area. One is to donate the parcel to a nonprofit or government conservation entity with open space management experience, such as the Triangle Land Conservancy or the Durham County Open Space Program, which already manages the adjacent land. The other is to voluntarily dedicate a solid and thorough permanent The other is to voluntarily dedicate a solid and thorough permanent conservation easement to an equivalent government or nonprofit entity. Without permanent protection of this conservation area, the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission believes this development proposal should not be approved.
Thank you. William Carroll.
My name's William Carroll. I live at 438 Irwin Road. My daughter also lives next door at 432. We would like to see the drive, the Irwin Road access drive moved closer to I-40 and Chapel Hill, which will create more space between our homes. My daughter's driveway will be taken by that road and she will be left with having to construct a new driveway. I just think that it's too much density. We don't want all that driving right by our homes. I'd like the density reduced and like I said, the road moved further toward Chapel Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Charles Harrison.
Charles Harrison, live at 446 Irwin Road. I'm not against the development. I know that we need the growth for our communities to survive. I'm with Ricky and that we need to move the road towards 40, not commit to giving land to Chapel Hill to build more properties on. There's 200-foot wide strip there. We're pushing it within 12 feet of our properties. So if we split it and put it in the middle, or either put it towards the 40 side and not commit to Chapel Hill, which has already been done, that land. The other concern I have is taking unadjoining property, the natural area or the floodplain across the road and use it in calculating the density. Currently, we're at 2.3 acres per unit and this will change dramatically and I know it needs to for the developer, but I'd like to look at the density as a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cliff Carroll.
My name is Cliff Carroll. I live at 476 Irwin Road, which is directly adjacent to this development. While I would just as soon live beside the forest the rest of my life, I know that's not reality. I think this is a good development. The developers have been very communicative with me, addressed my concerns, my questions, and I'm in support of this development.
Thank you. Mr. Ken Pugh.
How do I find the slides on here?
He's coming to help you.
There you go. And will this click it forward? Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ken Pugh, 3503 West Cornwallis, Durham. I'm a former registered professional engineer. The traffic impact analysis for Moriah Ridge has flaws that hide the impact of the development on Irwin Road and Mount Moriah. I discussed some of these flaws with the state and city traffic engineers, but they are overworked and underpaid. They just don't have the time. So in two minutes, I can only give a few highlights and you can ask me questions later, which is permitted by the rule. First, the data for Irwin Road. The data collected by the TIA says five out of 100 vehicles turn left on Whitfield Road. And yet, on the traffic distribution, it shows that 1/3 of the vehicles turn left. So it's not based on the collected data. How do these numbers come up? Well, there's no methodology for the traffic distribution, okay? No methodology is shown in the TIA. I asked the traffic engineer and have not heard anything back about methodology. So let me just give you a brief methodology. We simply take the development that 25% of the traffic is going toward Durham. We'd ask, how would it get there? And we ask Google and it shows it goes along Irwin. And then we come up that the traffic currently on Irwin is 12,500. We get an additional 1,800, which brings it to 14,300 and over the limit for Ellis, the level of service, the turning Irwin into an F. But now, let's just look at the TIA's done by the same firm. Here, it says that Mount Moriah has 12,500 vehicles per day and here it says that Mount Moriah has 5,300 vehicles per day. TIA's done by the same firm differ in Mount Moriah and with the additional traffic, Moriah would turn into an F as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the... Yes, sir. You can come up.
Good evening, thanks for listening. I'm Rob Lovinsky. I live at 3805 West Cornwallis Road. I moved here in 2018. I am not against development. I recognize the need to make housing available for people like myself, newcomers, for people who've lived here a long time, and for affordable housing. But I must state that sadly, this developer's been very disingenuous throughout the process. They put a nice face on it at their community meetings with pleasant young people doing the presenting, but behind the curtain sits an aggressive developer proposing a totally inappropriate, high-density project, pays lip service to affordable housing, open space protection, and other concerns. In actuality, the plan offers nothing of substance to the community while proposing to totally subvert the comprehensive plan that city government and citizens just invested two years in creating, as you all well know. The plan for the land east of Mount Moriah Road, which the developer claims to leave undisturbed, actually offers no permanent protection, would be part of a homeowners' association which could decide to develop at any time down the road. This land is in the New Hope Creek Corridor and is recognized as being of vital ecological significance. The area is slated for permanent conservation repeatedly, including in the Durham City of Durham's Watershed Protection Plan. As others have said, a mere statement that land will remain undisturbed is not permanent conservation. If the developer wanted to protect the land, they'd offer donate that parcel to a nonprofit or government conservation entity. The increased traffic from proposed development would be overwhelming on one-lane roads at capacity. As the last gentleman just said, the developer will be creating a traffic nightmare for the entire city for their own financial benefit. This plan is so fundamentally flawed in so many requests that the only reasonable option is for the planning commission to reject the proposal outright and invite the developer to return with a dramatically revised and improved proposal appropriate for the area. If the two-plus years invested in our plan means anything, this proposal will receive a unanimous no vote. Thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Daniel Kuszczyk. I live at 494 Irwin Road. I own the burgeoning Blueberry Farm on the corner of Irwin and Mount Moriah. During the last neighborhood meeting, it was requested of the applicant to increase their engagement. They wholesale denied this request, stating they were already above the notification radius laid out by the UDO by 400 feet. I will remind the commissioners that in a rurally zoned area, 400 feet doesn't go far. My property is six doors down from the proposal and my household has received no direct communication. It's concerning that such a basic good faith effort has eluded the applicant's priorities. If anyone here is in attendance tonight after having received one of my 300 hand-delivered mailers, you have my sincere thanks. The residents of both the town and the city have already expressed their hope for the future of this land in their respective land use plans. Chapel Hill envisioned maintaining the rural character. The applicant dismissed this concern, stating that the decision was made because town services would never be available in the ETJ. I find that to be a hand-waving assumption that the applicant has no standing to make. I've personally attended meetings in both Chapel Hill and Orange County to advocate the ETJ being dissolved and folded into the rural buffer to maintain its habitat and character as it stands. Likewise, outside the Durham UGB, with the rapid pace of building within the extant UGB, I question the wisdom and need to build entirely outside the boundary. First annexation has been disallowed since 2011. This is, however, thin comfort when developers are comfortable engaging in such Disney villain behavior as completely encapsulating holdout properties within their development. When asked if the development would affect their well in public comment, the applicant responded, "Well, we hope not." At this point, I'm not certain if the applicant can do better. I am, however, certain that the city of Durham can do better by denying this proposal as it stands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Like the way your son took up for you right there. He made sure we saw you.
My name's Jeff Morris. I live at 5305 Mount Moriah Road and I approve the project. I think it'll be a good thing. All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak before I move to the Zoom? All right, moving to the Zoom platform, we have Zayed Gilad. I believe you're unmuted. Go ahead. We can't hear you. Okay, just hold on. We're going to go to the next person to see if they, we are able to hear them. We have Alice G.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi ma'am. Hi, I am Alice Garcia. I am the daughter of Simfodosa Garcia. She lives at 5231 Mount Moriah. So she, I would just like to go on record, I'm speaking on behalf of her just to state that, you know, that she is...
Hello?
Hello?
Hold on, hold on, sir. We couldn't hear you at first. So just hold on until Ms. Garcia gets done speaking. Go ahead, Ms. Garcia. She's been muted.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I'd just like for it to go on record that she is not part of the annexation process. I think somewhere along the lines, there was a paper that stated she was. So just to be clear, she is not. She never was and does not plan to be a part of the annexation process. And just something for speaking for myself, I don't live there. I live in another city, but I just would like for you all to seriously consider, you know, what you would be approving if, you know, you decide to go through with this plan.
Thank you. All right. We're back there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, excellent. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Zia Jalad. My address is on record. I live in the Henderson Woods Development at the intersection of Irwin and Whitfield. And again, as with others, I'm not against development. I do appreciate the character, the rural character of the neighborhood and I'm very concerned at the traffic situation and I appreciate the comments of the previous speaker, Mr. Pugh. I think he outlined it quite well. In my personal experience and the experience of many others, the traffic heading north on Irwin has gotten quite bad over the last several years and it does not resonate with my experience, the traffic analysis done, and I really appreciate the analysis that Mr. Pugh did, which speaks more to what I think will be the future of Irwin Road heading north without additional emphasis on the traffic situation. For example, there needs to be a left turn lane at Whitfield. There needs to be multiple lights north of the Whitfield intersection. I think that the analysis has to include the entirety of Irwin all the way up to 15501 because the increase in traffic will impact the entire length of Irwin Road, not just the circle and the area up to Whitfield. So I feel like the traffic analysis has been inadequate. I'm certainly supportive of development. I think it should be a smaller development if it's to occur, but I would encourage the commission to decline this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine Turk.
Hi there. No worries on the pronunciation of the last name. Great effort. So I live at 220 Elizabeth Street, right around the road from this proposed development. We residents have raised since the first neighborhood meeting that the development plan is not in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan UGB and that it is not representative of the growth strategies recently adopted. Despite the conflict with UGB policies like 118 and 120 and strategies like Policies 115 and 126, some area residents have made efforts to meet with the developer to express concerns and requested several tax commitments that would increase the sustainability and preservation and reduce the impact to the sensitive resources, bringing it more in line with environmental goals. Examples are wildlife impact analysis, cluster design, no mass grading and clear cutting, solar panels, especially on affordable units to lower resident utility costs, mitigate noxious sound from I-40, light mitigation, integrate the remaining rural Orange County properties more seamlessly, et cetera. This is a thoroughly experienced developer in Durham who is only contributing the minimum and relying on requests and pressure from reviewing bodies before adding commitments. We know how this story goes. Just wait for feedback from PC to see what you find important. They hem and haw on the ability to incorporate feedback before submitting edits to the plan in the final days or hours before a city council public hearing and make a final concession at the meeting to demonstrate willingness to meet community needs. From the start, residents have been engaged in communicating their community needs, even requesting a community advisory board, but these bad actors ignore our requests for novel design focused on preservation, sustainability, and limiting impacts of development on the rural character of the area.
Thank you.
Urge them to vote no.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly McGregor.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I live at 53, or sorry, 5315 Mount Moriah Road. So I am a next-door neighbor with Wanda, who was the first woman who spoke. We are surrounded by this development. I just want to note that everybody who has showed, who has said that they are in favor of this development, they either don't live here or if they do live here, they are selling their property to the developer. So I just want to state that very, very clearly, that they are not... The only people in favor are the people who are pretty much gaining financially from this. I have also been following along very closely and I want you guys to know that MI Homes, I feel like, has not communicated clearly with us. They actually, in a comment that they had written, they said that they had talked to us about a sidewalk being put in front of our house, which they in fact had never contacted us directly about that concern. We also were not made aware of the annexation boundary modification, which includes our property as well, our next-door neighbors. We do not want to be annexed to Durham, but we were lumped in that. We're very concerned about our well, our septic, and the foundation of our house. And if this development were to go through, I believe that there should be re-inspections done, as well as money and escrow to repair any damage that could occur. As Wanda explained, there's only a 30-foot buffer between our property line and where this development will occur. We also, another major concern is, you know, we will be surrounded by Durham City and one thing that we have not heard anything about is what, how will we be serviced when it comes to the fire department? If there's an emergency, we live in Orange County, New Hope is our, New Hope Fire Station is who would respond to us, but if all of our neighbors are surrounded by Durham City, how, how is that going to work? Especially for Ms. Garcia, who her property is right smack in the middle of all of this property that is, that wants to be annexed to Durham City. I think there are a lot of concerns and I would really urge you guys to not approve this proposal and to really take more time to look at it.
Thank you. Next, we have Erin Coley.
Hi. You know, I think I will end up echoing a lot of what others have...
You know, I think I will end up echoing a lot of what others have said, but to cut to kind of the heart of the matter, I think there's, I'm Erin Coley, I live at 101 Karen Mor Lane, and I'm going to speak against this proposal. You know, I think to cut to the heart of the matter, I think the, the real lack of participation and lack of involvement in the, of the broader community, rather than those who have a financial interest in this planning process or the developer, I think really strongly suggests that, that, you know, the Planning Commission should vote no on this. It goes against not just, I think, the spirit of what's been decided in terms of, in terms of the Comprehensive Growth Plan and the UGB in Durham, but also outside of it. I think several of the, several of the Orange County neighbors have already spoken out about, about and against this, especially those that don't have a, a direct financial gain from its development. So I think, I think broadly, that's, that's one of the things that we really need to look at, and that most of these development processes, what we're really looking for is a fair distribution of, of costs and benefits, and this doesn't seem to be one that even attempts to, to strike that balance. The, the costs are all clearly on the side of those who are, who want to live here for an extended period of time, and the benefits accrue to those who are either selling their properties or those who are constructing the development itself. I would strongly urge you all to ask the developer to involve the community more deeply and to go back to the drawing board on a lot of these pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Miller.
Hi, thank you. I'm Elizabeth Miller. My address is on file. I had submitted some slides via email. Would it be possible to bring those up?
Do you hold on one second? We're trying to locate those.
Thank you. There's a chance they might have been submitted under Christine Falcone's name by accident.
Okay, I think they know where those are.
What was the name on the attachment?
Christine Falcone.
All right, I got it.
Thank you.
Let's start when you're ready.
Thank you. So the uniqueness of this development proposal with Chapel Hill surrendering their jurisdiction and development policies is that Durham's policies do not apply across the county lines during the annexation and rezoning review. Durham County Open Space reviewed two Durham parcels. Bill Haley with Durham Stormwater has noted that Durham's review of the reference plan only included the sliver of land currently within Durham's jurisdiction at the time of smittle. If the proposal was seeking Durham County land outside of UGB, the review would be much more stringent than what has occurred. Could you go to the next slide, please? So M.I. Homes touts robust aquatics review in their ESG, but clearly doesn't feel compelled to disclose this information where UDO policy does not explicitly require them to do so. Next slide, please. So M.I. Homes is not giving the governing bodies the full picture. There are at least seven streams that M.I. Homes is omitting, and without this complete picture, we're not getting an honest account of the environmental resources of the land. The streams running towards New Hope Creek and Dry Creek are of significance and tell a story about the connectivity of these parcels to their surrounding resources. The information is available, the petitioner asked for and received a stream determination report per North Carolina standards in 2022, and even appealed it. Could you go to the next slide, please? So the applicant is only identified one stream on their application. The applicant seems intent on ensuring these boards don't have the full picture of the environmental resources of this land. What else isn't being disclosed in the application and reviewed in its totality? Thank you.
Next, we have Melora McCall.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Melora McCall, and my address is on file. As Mr. Biker noted earlier, Morningstar has pushed this proposal in some form for a decade. With the state legislation adopted in '22, Chapel Hill may no longer deny petitioning applicants the ability to request annexation into neighboring jurisdictions. The town mayor was very upfront about this overruling the ability to deny the request and taking things, quote, "to the next level." Chapel Hill has been purposeful about the placement of I-40 and which portions of the town and county would be serviced by utilities. The inability to develop this property with utilities is because Owassa does not want to extend beyond the urban services boundary. The future land use map for the ETJ outlines to preserve the rural character, limit density, maintain well and septic, and utilize rural design elements. They were purposeful about the annexation boundary established in 1986, and for more than 25 years, policy plans and growth goals have maintained the rural nature for the ETJ. This proposal violates them. Chapel Hill is unable to pursue development of their property to the north as they've learned its conservation lands. The Chapel Hill resolution intended to capture what they could reasonably expect from M.I. Homes and Durham in their forced agreement to modify the boundary and permit development. Councilmember Searing asked Ms. Latham in April 23 if the east side of the parcels which they were trying to acquire extended towards New Hope Creek concerned over impacts to the wildlife corridor. Any reasonable person would conclude that she was not truthful when she answered no, as the parcels directly abut New Hope Creek and contain wildlife protection areas. As a result, Chapel Hill was not provided the opportunity to consider further protections for the environmental resources within their resolution. The applicant misled Chapel Hill and hasn't demonstrated a good-faith effort and willingness to abide by the remainder of the reservation stipulations and the intent of the town. Durham is not required by the state legislation in any way to approve this annexation request, and you shouldn't based on all the information available. I urge you to deny the proposal for Mariah Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Connor Hartman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm Connor Hartman at 4406 Curly Road. I want to share the perspective and opinions of community members who are the minority, which I would characterize, unfortunately, in this case, as those who are informed as to the very distance of the project. I don't think a consultative process is valid if the parties included don't know about it until the 11th hour. First, I think any reasonable analysis would conclude that this annexation case requires a very big decision about expanding the city limits and growth outside of the UGB. It was not included in the recent Comprehensive Plan update as a future growth area, and this is highly problematic. Second, Chapel Hill and Orange County residents have not had the opportunity to weigh in on Durham City's growth across the county lines. The ability to annex the land has been a backdoor negotiation between the two jurisdictions and the applicant who seeks to develop the land. While it might be convenient to pretend that the impact is limited to the neighbors within 600 feet, we all can agree that it is far from the true and real impact, and it undermines the trust between the people and the representatives we have elected to represent us. Based on conversations with many directly impacted neighbors, the applicant has made no effort, no real effort to notify impacted residents beyond the most basic neighborhood meeting notification requirements in compliance with Policy 7 and the comp plan. So impacted residents have had no idea this is even being considered, and it's yet another example of M.I. Homes only doing the absolute bare minimum. I also don't think the City of Durham or the--
Thank you. Sorry. Next, we have Barbie Magara.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Barbie Magara. My address is on file. Three of the five Durham County parcels included in this application request are Keystone reparions identified in the Critical Areas Action Plan. They are county lands primarily in the 100-year flood plain and the recreation and open space place type seeking annexation and rezoning. They are almost entirely undevelopable. They are sensitive environmental resources with immediate proximity to New Hope Creek. When asked why they were included in the UGB at all, the planning department confirmed that they only look at the, at the ability to service the land with the utilities and do not consider the terrain appropriateness or ability to develop the land. East Mount Moriah parcels should not have been included in the UGB and should be removed at the next review cycle. On the whole, sweeping undevelopable and highly sensitive resources into this application is inappropriate and should be rejected as is. The sensitive environmental resources of Durham County should be permanently preserved, managed by the county, along with other portions of New Hope Creek, and not managed by an HOA. Durham County Open Space presented to the JCCPC earlier this year, land that has no functional protections beyond the basic development regulations should be considered to have no protection for the purposes of tracking permanent conservation. I urge you to reject this proposal as is. The Keystone Reparations should not be included in the annexation and rezoning request. Please encourage Durham County to work with property owners to acquire and permanently conserve the land in alignment with the New Hope Corridor Open Space Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to speak at this time? Please, we have, all right. Arun Ganesh.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I thought I had registered, and if that didn't go through, I apologize. My name is Arun Ganesh. My address is on file. Just have two brief comments, and again, thank you for your time. The annexation and rezoning requests seek an exception to current allowance. All properties on the east side of Mount Moriah, including the property not included in the development plan, have no indicated use that requires an exception. As such, there is no justification for an annexation and rezoning exception, and I urge you guys to reject this proposal that includes properties that do not demonstrate a need for the annexation and rezoning they seek. Secondarily, I just want to concur with some of the previous statements made about the traffic impact analysis. I'm not a professional like that gentleman that had the PowerPoint presentation, so can't speak to it from a data perspective, but as someone that has been in this area for a long time and driving along Irwin Road, I live off Irwin Road for over a decade, the, the assessment that M.I. Homes has made for their traffic impact analysis, it just not, does not pass the sniff test of someone that's really lives and reads and drives in this area. And I just think Irwin Road, Mount Moriah Road, Whitfield Road, a lot of those roads in that area, they're two-lane already. We've seen increased traffic over the years, and I just find it hard to believe that this is, that that assessment that they put forth is credible, and, and I agree with the gentleman who showed that data before. That seems more concordant with my own personal experience. Again, thank you for your time, and I urge you all to reject the proposal.
Next, we have Lin Cheng.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lin Cheng. You have my address on file. I live in the rural buffer very close to this proposed annexation. Per the Comprehensive Plan, annexation into the city limits should only be considered when a substantial benefit to the community can be demonstrated. Although generalized statements have been made by the applicant in support of the urban growth boundary expansion, it has been without any regard for those living in immediately surrounding the area. Impacted area residents, both Durham and Orange County, are expressing concern over the impact to the environment, the manner this applicant has gone about the proposal, the outright non-compliance with the Durham growth goals and urban growth boundary limits, and the impact to the rural character of the media and surrounding lands. Triangle Connectivity Collaborative and New Hope Corridor Open Space Master Plan worn against increased traffic on Irwin Road, pressures this development would have on the wildlife corridor and Duke Forest are very meaningful because we live here. We know firsthand how the wildlife and the environmental resources would be negatively impacted. Policy 165 also indicates staff would recommend against development proposals that create donut holes, and this project creates four. Segregating and redefining the character of a portion of the ETJ is detrimental to the surrounding areas of Durham and Orange Counties and can compromise the integrity of the limited and sensitive natural resources. I urge you to reject this proposal and do not approve a request that compromises on so many commitments Durham has made to its area residents. Thank you.
Thank you. One more ask. Are there any other community members that would like to speak on the Zoom? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. And we are now opening the session up for commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Cutright? No?
Yeah, I got it. Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'll get started on this with a few questions. I'll start in an area that I always deem important, which is the affordable housing component of this. As I'm looking at the, the development, the development plan here, can you help me understand where on this the affordable housing piece will be? So I'm looking at the various pods that you've pointed out, one, two, and three. Where is the affordable housing in relation to this, these pods?
Yep. We're in the process and will be in the January, in the future, if anyone is submitting an app for the 50 Lytec units on the northern edge of Mount Moriah. I'm unclear which pod we're referring to. It's directly north and adjacent to Cathy Drive. I don't know if that's--
Karen Drive. Karen, I think.
Karen, excuse me, Karen Drive.
Yeah, basically the northern part of the site along Mount Moriah Road.
Got it. And then, just for clarity here, help me understand the relationship with Kelly Development and M.I. Homes, and how this will work in terms of the development of the affordable.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're in the process of going under contract with M.I., and they will be deeding us the real estate for free, which will enhance our ability to get affordable housing built out there. We will be submitting for 9% awards for the next couple of years. The site is in Orange County, so it won't compete with Durham County applications. It would otherwise be coming from DHA and other local development groups. After a couple of years, if we don't get a 9% award, M.I. will be committing to gap funding a 4% project so that there's a guarantee that affordable is built out on the site.
Got it. Is there a, a mechanism that limits the number of units to 50?
So our challenge is coming up with a proffer that we can meet in any combination of scenarios. We're going to actually end up submitting a project that's greater than 50 units for the 9% award. The issue is that the site's not in a qualified census tract, and the gap funding needs on a per-unit basis are relatively significant. And so in today's economic climate, and, you know, obviously, there's many years until this project would actually break ground, in today's economic climate, it's about $2.5 million to gap fund 50 Lytec units that are not in a qualified census tract in a 4% deal. And so if we start significantly increasing the affordable component of the project, we're going to start pushing the gap funding request beyond what would be financially feasible for the project as a whole to proceed.
Understood. So I'm clear, market rate developer is providing what would be the equivalent of roughly $2.5 million of gap funding on the affordable housing component and contributing, potentially contributing that $2.5 million, depending on how the Lytec deal falls out and which are awarded, and they're contributing some acreage for Kelly Humps to develop.
Yeah, correct. There's a guarantee that the affordable units are going to get built out here, whether it's in the context of a 9% deal that does not compete with other Durham County projects or a 4% structure. So that's, gives us as the affordable developer a level of confidence to lend our name and, you know, reputation to this effort, because we don't want to be a part of efforts to rezon sites where Lytec does not get built.
Understood. All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and if I may, Commissioner Cutright, in addition, M.I. Homes has to pay for all the road improvements that obviously benefit Mr. Heilbronn's project, as well as the water and sewer connections and extensions. So there's water and sewer and road improvements that are all being paid for by M.I. Homes, but will benefit Mr. Heilbronn's project.
Got it. 1,000 homes, we're talking 55% here, as I think about opportunities for expanding that, are there opportunities to contribute additional land that can be de-restricted for future Lytec development? Whether or not it's developed at this time, it's another story, but if we can restrict another, whatever it might be, five acres or so to affordable, I think that will help this project and go a long way. And you know, in the scheme of things, that incremental cost is nominal, it's baked into the already sunk cost of the land. Just a thought.
We appreciate it.
And asking for that proffer.
Oh, yeah, we're not able to proffer any additional property beyond what Mr. Heil...
No consultation, you just, that's a done deal?
That's, right.
Okay, want to be clear on what we're saying.
A minimum of 50 units, a minimum of 50 units, obviously it could be more, depending on how the Housing Finance Agency process works out.
All right.
Thank you. Link Wen? I mean, Commissioner Wen? I'm sorry, I thought you said something else. I'm so sorry.
So, on, help me understand this. So 1,000 units of townhomes and single-family, and you're saying the 50 affordable units will be completely within the Lytec project, which will be rental apartments?
Oh, there'll be many apartments. It'll be apartments, single-family detached, and townhouses. So there'll be many other market rate apartments, plus the apartments that'll be developed by Mr. Heilbrun's company.
Yes, let me rephrase that question. So all 50 units of proffered affordable units will be rental within the Lytec project?
That is correct. That's the only low-income housing tax credit that's available under the federal...
So no proffer of affordable townhomes or single-family, is that correct?
Right.
And is there currently projections for a mix in terms of the housing of the 1,000 units? What does that look like?
Hi, Erica Latham with MI Homes. There will probably, give or take-ish, 300 market rate units, the 50 Lytec units, and then the remainder will be a mix of probably 60, 40 townhomes to single-family detached. But that can change, is want to be clear, that townhouse, single-family mix.
Gotcha. And then, you said the Lytec project would be competing in Orange County. How is that possible if we would be annexing this into us?
I'm sorry. NCJFA tracks project awards by county, not by city. So regardless of what city this project gets annexed into, it's the county that it falls, where it ends up competing with other applications for a 9% award. So it ends up making the site quite unique, because we're both in Durham and in Orange County.
Gotcha. And then with the Lytec, there's usually a local thing, you know, local grant or award money required as a part of that. So are you foreseeing that any local monies would be?
No local funding will be a part of the affordable housing for this project.
Thank you. And then, just to be clear on the preservation thing, I think a few speakers spoke on that. So there is no formal conservation easement on the property east of Mount Moriah, is that correct?
At this point in time, that's correct. But we do have a meeting with the Durham County Real Estate Office. I've worked with that office for many years. I believe we have a meeting on December 17 for them to evaluate Durham County taking ownership of the property east of Mount Moriah Road. Therefore, if Durham County would own it, it would be incorporated into their portfolio.
Gotcha. And then on the, oh God, these policies, there's so many of them. Whatever the tree coverage one is, policy sum sum from staff, if you want to help me out there, but was greater height considered to decrease footprint of the buildings to increase tree coverage?
It's a difficult balance. So what we're trying to do is keep the townhouses at around three stories. The apartment buildings, Ted, what would be your apartment building heights?
45.
Yeah, about 45 to 50 feet is typically what's financed with the low-income housing tax credits. So we want to make that uniform across the project, so it's not like it stands out, which is the Lytec apartments versus the market rate apartments. So unfortunately, when you put all those moving parts together, that's why it came out at the tree coverage that it did. And so in order to balance that out, that's why I referenced the, one of the highest scores I've seen on any development plan, 27 out of 33 comp plan policies being complied with by this project. I think that's like an 81% compliance rate, which I think is quite high. But that is, that calculation that you referred to is exactly what made us move forward with other commitments to address that consistency.
Gotcha. And then I saw a mention of bikeways, walkways, et cetera, in the connected green spaces. Is the applicant proposing to build and maintain those?
Yes, sir.
Great. And then same with the 30-foot nature trail, what is that? Same thing, is that being built by the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Maintained by the applicant? Great. Blah, 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 blah. Question for staff, there was mention of the New Hope Corridor plan, and that they met six of seven recommendations. I was unclear on what recommendation wasn't being met. And I'm out of time.
Sure, thank you. I think the one that wasn't met was the change to the zoning district. I think the intent back in the late 80s was not to change the zoning district. So I think there are area Ds. There's, in the component four, which is the majority of where the New Hope Corridor Open Space Plan attends to, the area that you'll see in the plan that's labeled D, that according to the plan is not intended to be changed, and any change to the zoning district would not be compliant or not meet that intent. So that's where that comes from.
Commissioner, if I may make one clarification, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. When I was talking about what the applicant will build, it's the pedestrian infrastructure on the west side of Mount Moriah. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to or not. I thought that was what you were referring to. I just want to make sure that's clear on the record.
I don't really know what I'm referring to. I see in the application a lot of mention of the connected open spaces, and within those, there's several mentions of bike and pedestrian path within the open spaces. That's what I'm referring to.
I think he's referring to those on the east side.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was talking about the west side. So what I was referring to is the west side where all the homes would be.
Yeah, so the answer is no.
Yeah, so text amendment number 21 is the one that talks about the establishment of a series of connected open spaces. So that would be on the west side, to connect sort of the open spaces that border this project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Kopac.
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to start just with the disclosure that I was leading the Burt's Bees Foundation at the time it funded the landscape analysis for wildlife habitat connectivity at New Hope Inlet Creek. So I make folks aware of that, though I was not involved in any of the content or the recommendations of the analysis. I see a lot of pros to this development, and I can appreciate the proximity to the site and the amenities, and you know, of course, the housing availability, the affordability piece. And I can also see, having visited this morning, what the current residents love about the rural character of this, of these tracts as they currently stand. I do have some questions and some concerns, many of which have been raised by residents, and I wanted to pose some of those. You know, I'm interested by this conversation around the UGB. You know, the applicant, was the applicant correct, I'm asking staff, that somehow we can know that this would have been included in the urban growth boundary, had it not previously been excluded by this other agreement?
No, we don't know that for certain. What we do know is that the previous consent agenda before it was amended would not have allowed the city of Durham to annex into Orange County. So when the conference, when the conference of plan was drafted in 2023, it would not have occurred to staff to include the UGB into Orange County, because that wasn't allowed by the consent judgment.
Okay.
I don't think we can say for certain whether Durham County Commissioners and the City Council would have extended the UGB there. It just simply wasn't an option at the time.
Okay, thank you. A question for the applicant. I just noticed in the section with recommendations by Durham Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission that in response to their comments, the applicant responded noted to each of the comments, and I was just curious if that means that you plan to do everything proposed, or does it mean just an acknowledgement that they had made a comment?
Commissioner Kopac, I'm hopeful that what we put forward in terms of the text commitments listed on the development plan, which include the bike and pedestrian facilities on Mount Moriah Road and the crossing, which is highlight, provides for that safety infrastructure, I'm hopeful that's responsive to their, to their comments. When I was reviewing the staff report, that was certainly how I took it, that what they said matched up with the text commitments that we have on the development plan itself. And so to the extent we, you know, we're certainly happy to evaluate other options, but again, I've looked at many development plans. This one really does move the needle, I think, in terms of pedestrian connectivity to meaningful destinations, like, you know, a grocery, a pharmacy, other shopping, other restaurants. And I forgot to mention, I walked from the southern entrance of our, of our development, and it's only a 12-minute walk to the bus stop within New Hope Commons. So you've got access to transit, you've got access to services, and you can see the commitments that are going to dramatically improve what's there today. So I was walking on the existing sidewalk and crossing Mount Moriah Road at the location of our, of our southern entrance. There's no crosswalk there now, but obviously that'll be improved when this project is built. So what I put forward in terms of real-life experience and what our team has put forward in terms of text commitments are, I think, you know, again, this is, we talked a lot over the last few years about the 15-minute city. This is the best example I can see of actually implementing it.
So if you wouldn't mind just hanging out here, so you had talked about gaps in the sidewalk, and the gaps were in part driven by a property owner who's unwilling to...
Oh, that's Ms. Roden and Ms. McGregor. We went to Red Robin and had lunch with them, said, please think about it, do you want us to put a sidewalk on your property? I'm 99% sure Ms. Roden said, we don't want a sidewalk there, and that was, I think, commensurate with her comments. So those are the two parcels that are internal to the site. The rest of the frontage, obviously you'll have pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to take people all the way down to New Hope Commons.
Okay. So building on the questions by my fellow commissioner about the ownership and the protection of the site, permanent protection, I know you said you're talking to Durham County about taking ownership. What do they express as the likelihood of that, and have you considered a donation to a nonprofit or the conservation easement?
We're going to work with Durham County initially. Commissioner Kopac worked with Jane Corrison and her team for many years. They own the property that's directly adjacent to us, so they are the logical party to acquire it. So we'll evaluate it, but I personally, I feel pretty comfortable that Durham County will move forward with it.
Okay, my time is up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gregory?
Okay, this will be quick, I promise. So something that I'm still a little bit confused, first and foremost, I appreciate all of the environmental considerations that have been taken into account for this project. Something that I'm still a little fuzzy on, though, is looking at the development plan. There's two options in terms of canopy coverage, based on whether Lytec is approved as part of the project. So I'm just curious where, you know, at what point will you know whether 30% of the canopy is going to be there, 20%, because it's something like a 16% difference in acreage? Or 16, like gross acreage change?
That'll be evaluated as we go through the site plan process, Commissioner Gregory. I would say it'll be flushed out within the first or second phase, well, probably the second or third phase of the development as it moves forward. The, as Mr. Heilbrun described, the 9% low-income housing tax credit is highly competitive. But again, our team feels very bullish on our chances of winning one of those. Of course, there are no guarantees in this life, but that, I think that will sort itself out early on in the process. We appreciate that it's a, it's a difficult trade-off. I wish we had more ability. I mean, we all want to see higher percentage of tree coverage, but the reality of how the site lays out with the desire to provide as many types of missing middle housing as possible, really just made it not possible to increase the tree canopy above what's stated on the development plan. And to be perfectly honest with you, that's what we run into with these tax credit deals. It's simply very hard, because you've got stormwater control measures eat up 15% of just about any site that we work on, and then you've got the roadway connections with the sidewalks and the bicycle infrastructure. Again, that reduces the tree coverage. Just, it's just, it's competing values, and it's a difficult balancing act, but I think we've put forward the best development plan we can in terms of compliance with comprehensive plan policies, again, 27 out of 33, and providing the opportunity that we discussed with Commissioner Cutright for the for-profit developer to subsidize the affordable housing. So I appreciate the concerns. It's a difficult balancing act. Mr. Zumwalt, Ms. Latham, Mr. Heilbrun, the rest of our team, we looked at it long and hard, sir, and this was the best balance we could come up with.
Thank you. I just, I have one question before I ask my commissioners if we have any additional questions. I'm still a little bit confused on the count and the mix of the, of the building types. I know there's 1,000...
Units.
Units, 50%, I mean, 50 of those throughout the application and said today will be affordable through low-income housing tax credits in an apartment style. And then it talks about townhomes and single families. Will there be market rate apartments as well?
Yeah, approximately 300 market rate apartments in addition to what Mr. Heilbrun would build on site, in addition to that.
And the design of those 50 affordable and the 300 will match?
As close as possible, Madam Chair.
They'll be in the same location? Same area?
More or less, yeah. More or less the northern, what would be the northeastern segment of the assemblage would be the apartments, and then the townhouses and the single family would be the, going south from there.
Okay. Any additional questions? Yes.
Hey, so I just want to clarify on, so it sounds like the eastern part, that part that's going to be protected, has been assessed, environmentally assessed. Has the western part, I know, and one of the public comments was about the streams that were on it, but were not identified. So has there been any environmental assessment on that side, the Orange County side?
We've certainly researched everything that's in the public domain, soils maps, USGS, everything that's done. And the process that we go through is similar to really just about most developments that have any significant amount of acreage. A lot of those issues are decided at the site plan stage, when we get into the in-depth engineering and determine what the buffers are, if required. And so in that regard, I don't think this project is significantly different than many other types of projects that this commission has considered and that have been approved by the City Council. So it'll certainly be thoroughly analyzed at the site plan stage, and if, you know, and then it's either intermittent or perennial, that makes the buffer, you know, obviously dictates the size of the buffer. But that's all evaluated at the site plan stage, and that is required of every type of project that we do, commercial, residential, industrial, and what have you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I'd just like to ask a quick question related to policy 128, which is to ensure upgrades to the existing sewer system that are required to serve the development are provided by the associated developer. In the report, that was listed as undetermined. Can you help me better understand what that means and what the timeline for resolution is? is?
I, I think that's actually more a question for us than it is for the applicant. The water management is working on the, what's called a summary utility develop, it's a SUDs. I can never always remember what SUDs stands for, but I think it's summary utility development statement. And that's their assessment of what the water and sewer requirements are going to be in terms of size of pipe and, and routing and so forth. That's still getting done. It's pretty much done, but awaiting approval from water management, and so we will have that to the applicant as, as soon as it's ready from water management.
And that's all, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Commissioner, that's all financial obligation of, of MI Homes. Again, and any water and sewer upgrades have to be paid for by the private developer.
And that's a commitment that y'all are able to make?
Of course.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's not just a commitment, it's a requirement.
Yeah, exactly. That's, it's been the Durham way from the days of Ken Wright, to bring, bring back a name.
Water management staff will tell them what they need to build, and they need to build it.
Exactly.
Just one other question, which is, there are some environmental concerns expressed by the community this evening. Are there any specific concerns from the community members that you'd like to address?
Only to address that, there are only two licensed traffic engineers in the room or on Zoom today, and those are Earl Lane Thomas and Earl Llewellyn. State law makes it very clear, it is not appropriate for anybody to hold themselves out as a professional engineer unless they are licensed by the state of North Carolina. I certainly don't mean to speak for Ms. Thomas or Mr. Llewellyn, but based on the staff report, you saw that there is a, there are appropriate traffic mitigation measures, and that handles the traffic generated by this development. Anything to the contrary is being put forward by somebody who is not a licensed traffic engineer by the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Kopeck?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions for the staff. I'm curious if there are other examples where the cities recently annexed land outside of the UGB since the adoption of the new comprehensive plan?
We have not had an annexation outside the UGB since the adoption of the comprehensive.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that having, you know, these, these new residents brought in, you know, paying taxes will bring revenue, you know, into the city. Do we have an idea of the cost to the city for the extension of services? I know that's probably a question better asked in advance of the meeting, but I'm curious if you can help us dimensionalize, like, what that commitment is for Durham to extend those services?
Not sure, excuse me. Yeah, there, I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but there is an operational impact analysis in your packet and a cost-benefit analysis as well. I'm not sure of the specifics.
Thank you. All right. And then for the applicant, just getting back to what Commissioner Chakowski was referring to, some of the requests from the community, you know, is the applicant willing to consider doing a tree survey on the Orange County side as a proffer?
No, sir.
Is the applicant willing to undertake a wildlife impact analysis?
Actually, to my knowledge, Commissioner Kopeck, that's never been required of any project. If you are aware of a project that's done one...
You know, it's why I'm requesting it as a proffer.
Oh, I, I understand. I'm just saying, are there examples of other, of other developments that have been held to that standard? To my knowledge, the answer is no. I, I could be wrong.
It never hurts to be a leader. I just wanted to put that out there.
For this case, the answer would be, the answer would be no.
There was a request from a resident for a privacy screen. I don't know if that's something that, it tends to be addressed?
If it's a fence for Ms. Roden, we're, we're happy to build that, sure.
And I think other residents had requested it as well.
Yeah, if it's Mrs. Roden or Mrs. McGregor, if they want a fence, no problem.
And do we know why there weren't all the seven streams shown? Is that just a level of granularity that doesn't take place yet, or were they, those left out somewhat for some reason in the analysis that was done?
I would, I do not accept that premise, Commissioner Kopeck. I'm not aware of any basis in the public record for people to put that assertion forward. And again, that's something that is evaluated thoroughly at the site plan process, and whether it's 1, 2, 4, I don't know. But I trust, I trust BGE to figure that out and put the appropriate buffers on our site plan.
If I could just address something to, to your question about land disturbance tree survey. We do, the UDO does require a land disturbance tree survey. It's 833B in the UDO. It is required within, of any area within 30 feet of preserved tree coverage, floodplain, steep slope, riparian buffer, landscape buffer, wetland or conservation area. So certain areas of the site, but that happens at the site plan stage. It is not required at the zoning stage.
And we are 100% in support of that. What I do not think is reasonable is for the 125 acres in Orange County that we're talking about to be subject to a tree survey, because that's a, a massive amount of acreage to take on that, that burden when we have the UDO protections that Mr. Kane just referenced.
Okay, we're nearing 7:30, so...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the last comment I would just make is, I think this has come up repeatedly. It's not just the case of this application, but just about engagement and, you know, from an overall overarching standpoint, I need to perhaps rethink the requirements for engagement. I, I think for a project this size, I would think doing the bare minimum of engagement isn't sufficient. But, but I know you did what was required. But when it gets to, when we're talking about rural areas, you know, as the speaker said, you could have a neighbor to the project that isn't included. And so I think that's something worth mentioning and worth a rethink of what the requirements are for engagement for these sorts of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We need to wrap this up, nearing, go ahead. Just quick. Nothing? No? Good. Sure. Awesome. All right. Are we ready to move this forward?
Chair, as it relates to Case Z2300051 and the annexation BDG2300033, Mariah Ridge, I make a motion that we move this case forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Kopeck to move Case Z230051-BDG230033, Mariah Ridge, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron?
No.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory?
No.
Commissioner Wen?
No.
Commissioner Kopeck?
No.
Commissioner Mackiver?
No.
Commissioner Woke?
No.
The motion fails 2 to 6.
All right. Thank you all. If you're leaving, please exit quietly so we can continue on with the business. However, at this time, I'm calling for a break. We will be back at, in five minutes at 7:28, so let's just make it 7:35, we'll come back.
How do you attract, say, a high school basketball player to, who's interested? I mean, what, what would you say to him about joining the fire department?
So...
I'll put you on the spot.
No, high school guys, high school people are, in general, they're easy to target because they're young. So for me, it's always about the money. Hey, when you're 18, you can make $45,000 straight out of high school. I don't know many 18-year-olds that can make $45,000. On top of that, look, you're in a, you're in a team sport, you want to be part of the team, continue on that, that team essence, the fire department is perfect for you. You know, we have that bond, we have that family, that chemistry. We, we like to play pranks and jokes just like you do when you're on the team. This will be the perfect job for you. So, you know, I just feel like, hey, you may not, you may not be able to go to college and play D1 ball, but this is, you can serve your community and still be part of the team and make your impact.
The department has a couple of new initiatives that you're using to try to recruit specific applicant types. So let's start with the 30-30 initiative, 30-by-30 initiative. What is the goal of that program and why is it needed?
So traditionally, law enforcement has been a male-dominated field, and we want to change that. So we're looking to increase those numbers. We're pushing it 30% more females into the department by the year 2030. By doing this kind of initiative, we're trying to highlight law enforcement for women and try to make it an appealing career move for someone that may not have thought that law enforcement was for them.
I came to the city for the great insurance and retirement benefits, but I stayed for stability and vacation time. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the Bull City, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
I came to this city to develop leadership and supervisory skills. I stayed because of the city's culture and dedication to serving residents. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the Bull City, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
Owning a home provides a sense of financial stability, family, community, and pride. But housing prices are now higher than ever, making it hard for many Durham residents to afford their first home. That's why the city of Durham is offering the Down Payment Assistance Program to support eligible individuals with up to $80,000 in 0% interest forgivable loans to purchase a house within the city limits. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
We don't always agree who to pull for on game day, but we all can agree that litter is bad for North Carolina.
There's no place like home. Home is where the heart is. Hey, can I help you? Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. It is our place of safety and warmth. Home is where love resides, memories are created, and laughter warms the heart. That's why the Durham Human Relations Division is committed to enforcing the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits unlawful discrimination based...
Next case up, we have Case Z230053 Hoover Road Assemblage. May we have the staff report, please?
00053 Hoover Road Assemblage. The request is for just over 23 acres of land currently zoned RU5, RU52, and CN to be zoned PDR 17.325. This would allow for up to 402 residential units, a minimum of 25 of which would be townhouses. The existing zoning, as mentioned, is residential urban 5, residential urban 52, and commercial neighborhood. The site is surrounded by residential zoning to the west and south, and industrial light zoning to the, to the east. There is some commercial zoning to the north of the site. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. US 70 is the highway to the east. There are some light industrial uses to the east and residential neighborhoods to the west and south. The site is currently designated established residential, mixed residential neighborhood, and neighborhood services area on the placetime map. Staff recommends that, should the zoning request be approved, the entirety of the site be re-designated on the placetime map as mixed residential neighborhood. The applicant has included graphic and text commitments as shown. 5% of the rental units would be income restricted to 60% AMI households for 20 years. 5% of for-sale units would be affordable for 80% AMI households for 30 years. Petition for closure of Hilltop Drive and Felix Street would take place. Improvements to Sater Street and Creasy Street would be constructed. Northbound left turn lane on South Miami Boulevard at Hoover Road and a 10-foot shared-use path along South Miami Boulevard. The applicant has proposed a tree preservation area and riparian buffer bisecting the site. Hilltop Street and Felix Street, as mentioned, are to be closed, and Sater and Creasy Streets are to be brought to city standards. Neighborhood meetings were held on November 15th, 2023, and December 3rd, 2024. One comment has been received on the Durham Resoning Explorer in relation to this case in support. While we don't have any comments as of today in opposition, you may have received two emails earlier this afternoon expressing opposition to this case. The proposal is consistent with the placetime map designations of mixed residential neighborhood and established residential, but is not consistent with the neighborhood services placetime. Staff recommends designating the entire site mixed residential neighborhood if the zoning map change is approved. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing, and the applicant is already at the podium.
Can y'all see the PowerPoint? Madam Chair? No, it's not very nice. Is that, great. Good evening again, Chairwoman Cameron, members of the commission. I'm Patrick Biker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group. I'm here tonight representing the local ownership group for this assemblage along Hoover Road. I'm joined tonight by Dan Jewell, who's the regional director for Thomason Hutton. Thomason Hutton created the development plan that's before you this evening. This is a rather unique situation, since Dan and I are representing a group of local owners who have assembled one of the strongest infill developments that I can recall. This local ownership group also includes Durham Habitat for Humanity. The team has put together 23 acres, but it is important to note only slightly more than... The team has put together 23 acres, but it is important to note only slightly more than 12 acres are developable. The construction of Seder and Creasy Streets with sidewalks on both sides will create a grid network in this corner of Durham. And when you add in the required stream buffers along with the stormwater control measures, all those factors put together reduce the acreage that can be developed to just over 12 acres in total. I have to say, I've worked in Durham for about 30 years, and I did not realize that this infill opportunity existed until we started working on this rezoning. Unfortunately, unfortunately, this acreage was used as an illegal dumping ground for many years. The local owners have had to spend over $60,000 of their own money to clean up this illegal dumping activity that you can see on these slides we're showing tonight. Since the Hoover Road Assemblage owners are the applicant here and not a developer, it precluded some of the options related to our comprehensive plan. However, the owners have made a strong commitment to affordability. Along with the new streets and sidewalks, that affordability commitment drives this infill development in order to locate new housing approximately two miles east of downtown. As shown on our development plan, there is a commitment to apartments and townhouses within this assemblage in order to diversify the housing stock in this corner of Durham. Since it was the desire of this ownership group to diversify the housing types in this area, we knew we had to be a good neighbor and focus on community engagement. Accordingly, in addition to our two virtual neighborhood meetings that Mr. Kane referred to, I want to highlight that approximately 600 residents were notified of each of those virtual neighborhood meetings. In addition to the virtual neighborhood meetings, we also had two lengthy meetings with Partners Against Crime District 1. The first meeting was on Saturday, July 20 of this year, and then, and then again, we met with them on Saturday, November 16, 2024. As a result of those meetings, the leadership of Partners Against Crime District 1 provided us with this letter of support. We hope you can take this opportunity to review this letter. I'll provide a copy of the letter from the PAC 1 leadership to the planning department to be included in the record of this meeting. And so, based on these reasons, we respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. Our team will be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We have Jeff Norris, part of the applicant team. The previous one? He resigned for the wrong one. John Warsor? Nope. Rob Lewis? That's it? That's all that was on there? Let me see who's on the Zoom. Is there anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak? Is there anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak? One last question. Anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak? All right, I am going to, the chair is going to close the public hearing now, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion of questions. Commissioner Wen?
Just had some clarifying questions about the affordable housing component. I'm just, could you walk me through that? I'm just wildly confused.
Oh, yeah, it's 5%. There'll be a mix of townhouses and apartments on the site. 5% of the apartments that are for rent will be income-restricted to 60% of area median income for a period of 20 years. And then, on the townhouse, for-sale townhouses, 5% of the townhouses will be for-sale at 80% of the area median income, and those will be deed-restricted for 30 years.
And then, I'm assuming Habitat is doing the townhome?
No, actually, my, my understanding, based on our meetings with them, is they're simply going to sell their acreage. They are cash-strapped at this time, is my understanding. Take the money from the sale of the property and redirect it to existing projects they have ongoing right at, at this time where they need financial help.
Gotcha. And could you walk me through the rationale? I think I see here that policy 40 is not fully met, because it requires an affordability period of 30 years, and you're offering 20. Could you walk me through that?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's because of the difficulty in the, we're just seeing very difficult financing conditions for multifamily projects at this time. It's much different than it was just a few years ago. And so, since this is an ownership group and not a developer, their feeling was it would be easier to attract a developer with a 20-year restriction as opposed to a 30-year restriction.
Gotcha.
Given the difficulties in, in the financial markets at this time for multifamily projects.
And then, one other question I had was policy, actually two. Policy 49 not being met, were there options considered to help lower the utility costs for future residents?
Again, because we're not the developer, we're just an ownership group, it's very difficult for us to speculate as to what would be appropriate measures to, to take with that, because, you know, the, the ownership group that owns this property and has assembled it over a number of years simply doesn't have the expertise to make that determination.
And just while I'm clear on process, as an ownership group, if this zoning and with said conditions were approved, that would be transferable by sale to said developer, correct?
Yes.
Yes and no. It's not that it's saleable by, it's not transferable, it's that the zoning runs with the land regardless of who the ownership is. So if, if the rezoning is approved and this property owner sells to another entity, that entity is still bound by the zoning rules until they come before you all and the city council to ask for those zoning rules to be changed.
Gotcha. But they would only come before the city if there was any changes that the new owner would need?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, all right, that was the last, last question. Thank you.
Right.
So, a couple of questions for the applicant. So, first of all, maybe I misread it, but I was trying to understand the traffic numbers. And I thought what I was seeing was that there would be a decrease in expected traffic?
I didn't pick that up in the site staff report, but we did have a TIA that was, that was scoped with Ms. Thomas. It was done by VHB, by Mr. Andy Top, who's an excellent traffic engineer. Our understanding was that the existing network can handle the traffic from this development without any-
Looks like staff is checking that. They just have been confused by it.
Anything other than what's committed to in the staff report.
While they're, they're checking that, from, from BPAC, there had been a request for curb radius of 10 feet and raised sidewalks, raised crosswalks across car access points. Is that something that the ownership group has considered?
We considered it, but Dan, that didn't seem like it was, again, that was something that we weren't, we just were not comfortable with, given the, that we don't have a specific layout in terms of where the townhouses would go, where the apartments would go. We, we really don't have the wherewithal to evaluate that.
And Commissioner Kopeck, Dan Jewell, Thomason Hutton. One of the other reasons we couldn't commit to that is it could require right-of-way that we don't know whether that right-of-way exists right now, or we would have to acquire additional right-of-way. So we can't commit to something when we don't know that we have the property needed to do those improvements, if that makes sense.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that. Do you want to go, and then I'll ask my last question? Okay, thank you.
Earlene Thomas Transportation. So there, the zoning report does show that there'd be a decrease in traffic based on the highest and best use under the current zoning versus what's proposed with this zoning. So that's why it shows a decrease.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, I had a question about the tree coverage. I know that you come before us, Mr. Jewell, previously, and there had been a, an application that sort of committed to the minimum by default. I'm curious, in this case, if, if you see opportunity to go beyond the, the minimum requirements for, for tree coverage for the site.
So as, as you, you called us out, we do generally commit to the minimum requirement. But as Mr. Biker pointed out in his presentation, and I think in the staff report as well, because of the fairly large amount of stream buffer and buffers that we're, we're putting in place and that sort of thing, there will be more tree coverage. I mean, it's just, when we get to site plan, you'll see that. We just typically do not commit to more when we know we're going to have more, if that makes sense. It's there. There's so many other environmental constraints we're considering, we're committing to landscape buffers and that sort of thing. So we'll have, we'll have well above the tree coverage requirement, for sure. We don't know exactly what that number will be, but it'll be at least 7%.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do want to highlight, Commissioner Kopeck, the tree coverage area behind Capri Terrace. I recall a resident of Capri Terrace attending one of our virtual neighborhood meetings, and that was done specifically to, to address her concerns, to demonstrate the community engagement that, that we undertook as a, as a team for this project to put this development plan forward. So there, while it may not address the percentage, I do want to stress the location is based on our community engagement.
Okay. Yeah, and, and just so I don't only gripe about community engagement, I did appreciate the engagement that was done here, the PAC attendance, you know, useful to see the letter with some community leaders who've considered this. You know, this is an area that has a high displacement risk. Cost burden renters, much higher percentage of people of color than the county, and so I think the engagement's even more important here. And, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that with an infill project like this, with the availability of, of, of more units and density here, that the result could be to perhaps reduce some of the pressure on existing folks who, who do want to stay. I know those dynamics can be hard to tease out, but I just want to highlight that this is an area where we want to be especially intentional in the outreach that we do, and I hope that will continue on through to the site planning stage, so.
Yeah, they certainly asked questions. The folks at PAC 1 certainly asked questions along those lines. I would say both meetings, the one in July and the one in November, we were there for at least an hour, at least an hour teasing out some of those issues.
Hey, so I had, I'm sorry, I had a, a question. So because it's only, you're only developing 12 of 23 acres, I am wondering why you wouldn't increase the tree coverage, right? It just seems like it'd be a stronger application if you did that. If you know, you know, you're going to be preserving trees in addition, in excess of the media, right?
It, it's hard to, it's hard to guesstimate what that percentage would be, and the other thing I want to emphasize is that we also don't even know what, what height the buildings will be, since we're just the ownership group. So if there are three-story apartment buildings, you know, three-story walk-ups, that's, that's going to definitely consume more of the property than four stories with an elevator. But we don't know what type of apartment developer is going to be attracted to, to build at this location. And that, and there again, if, if, if we were representing one of our typical, you know, 95% of the time that Mr. Jewell and I are here, we have a specific developer who can say, yeah, I, I only build four-story apartment buildings, I only build five-story apartment buildings. We have no idea what the interest is in this location. So because we could have, you know, three-story townhomes and three-story apartment buildings, that would be, that would, that would probably use up most of the 12.3 acres that we actually have to use.
There, there is, Patrick, excuse me, there is one other mitigating circumstance. If you look at the, the survey and the development plan in your package or the existing additions, you'll notice there's a very big power line easement that runs through the middle of the site, and we can't plant trees in there. So that's one of the reasons it's, it's diminished. But we'll, we'll work that out at site plan.
Okay, sorry, I just have a couple more. One is, policy 101 is talking about native plantings. It seems like that's an easy one to, to, to do. And I guess this is a, this area's priority for green infrastructure, and that policy is not met as well, nor is there a school proffer. And I'm done.
Pardon me, I'm scrolling through the staff report so I can get to the, the same thing. Policy 101 encourages new development that incorporates native plants, wildlife habitats, natural landscaping, and that discourages invasive exotic species. Again, since they're not going to be building this or developing, develop it, they can't commit to that right now and don't necessarily want to commit to that for another developer. But that's, that's one that we're able to meet sometimes on some projects that we brought before you, but not all. Again, this is a little bit, little bit different circumstance. I suspect there's invasive species out there right now that we're probably going to be getting rid of just because of what's growing out. And what was the other policy you mentioned?
This area's priority for green infrastructure. That's policy 108.
Native trees, vegetation, protected, protected green spaces, green roofs, walls, and biosquails. Again, it, it's not that, that the developer will not do that, it's just we can't commit to that right now. But I think we do a pretty good job of touching a lot of the other policies, or I think we're getting a, a pretty fair score based on some other projects we've seen and done. But I appreciate those questions. Those are all good.
I just want to highlight, there was an outstanding question about the school mitigation that you had as well.
Yeah, at this point, we'll, we'll evaluate that going forward to city council, Commissioner Kopeck, but this has been a tough site for our, our team to maintain. I, that's why I, I didn't show you nearly all the trash pictures we had. And so they've actually lost many tens of thousands of dollars. It may be six figures now, maybe? I mean, yeah, it's probably over six figures that's been spent on taking care of illegal dumping here. So unfortunately, we're not at a position to commit to it, but we'll look at it before we go to city council. It's a tough site.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? More questions? Nope. Are we ready to move this case forward? All right, may I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case Z2300053 Hoover Road Assemblage, I make a motion that we move this case forward with a favorable recommendation to city council.
Second? Nobody wants to get out of here. Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright and seconded by Commissioner Kopeck to move case Z230053 Hoover Road Assemblage forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregory?
Yes.
Commissioner Wen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopeck?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner McIver?
Yep.
And Commissioner Woke?
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any committee updates? None. Do we have any new business? None. Do we have any staff announcements?
No, no staff announcement.
None. Meeting adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody. See you next year.
See y'all in...